This is the school committee. We are at Apple Seeds Restaurant. It is Monday, May 22nd. Regular meeting is seven o'clock. We'll start the meeting with a join and a salute to the flag. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. What did you say? We're doing more than four.
Do you want to do the open call? We can do the open call. Next time.
What's something that got the motion to move on?
So I make a motion to move the agenda so that we can have the subcommittee reports heard first so that we can get the warrants done and then we can proceed with the rest of the meeting.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay. So Finance Committee, pull up the warrants.
No one's going to take it away. Warrant thirty-nine for $2,333,358.74. Warrant forty for $80,944.26. Warrant forty-one for $2,535,199.99. Warrant forty-two for $3,156,134.75. Warrant forty-three for $2,286,393.88. For the grants and revolving funds, warrant thirty-nine, $167,542.26. Warrant forty for $79,776.11. Warrant forty-one for $200,548.22. Warrant forty-two for $461,778.90. Warrant forty-three for $197,350.8. Warrant forty-four for $159,986.92.
Okay. You heard the report.
I'll second.
Just have a second. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor? So suppose anything else in finance? Okay, move on to other committees.
Policy has nothing used since our last meeting.
Anyone else? If not, we'll go back to the regular agenda, open it up for public comment. Anyone would like to address the school committee? Is there a microphone? No, no. You want to sign up, please, do we have?
Yes.
Hello?
Larissa Murphy?
That's me.
Name and address for the record, please.
I live at 93 Vassar Street in Worcester. I'm a social studies teacher at Lemonster High School. I've worked at LHS for sixteen years. Good evening and thank you for allowing me to speak today. First of all, I would like to thank the school committee for fighting so hard on behalf of the students in this district. Yours is not an easy job, especially the job of equitably distributing an ever-dwindling pot of funds. However, it is my opinion that some on this committee are demonstrating a single-mindedness that is clouding their vision of the current situation. The totality of the people who support the position that we need to better fund our schools is in this room. You do not have the support of the community to increase school funding above net school spending. The citizens of Lemonster have continually elected a mayor who promises fiscal responsibility, lower taxes, and a healthy surplus. The voters have spoken. Please, listen. There are very few parents here tonight, with the exception of those dedicated school committee members with children in the system. And while I am very proud to see how many of my students have come to show their support, most of them are seniors and recent graduates who don't readily have a stake in the outcome. Members of the school committee, I am asking you now to put politics aside and vote in favor of the superintendent's net school spending budget, less the items I will discuss in a minute. I know it stinks. Everything about this stinks, but it's the only responsible thing to do. Any amendment you make to increase funds will be voted down by the city council. The mayor has consistently made his position clear, and that is the position that will prevail. After we have dealt with this crisis, you have some soul-searching to do because you are supposed to be the oversight for the superintendent and his administration, and you have allowed him continually to create a mess of LPS finances. You've put your head in the sand and you refuse to do the hard work that you were elected to do. This is supposed to be a budget meeting. The superintendent didn't bring a budget. There is no budget to discuss. There are PowerPoint presentations, there are lists of cuts, but there is no budget. You complain that you ask for budget information from the superintendent, but you never get what you want. Why are you content with that? Why is the administration that refuses to supply you with relevant financial data still the administration? To the mayor, I respect your position that the school system should be accountable for the money it has before it's given more. You are 100 percent right. It's like having your kid come to you for lunch money and you saying, "What happened to the lunch money I gave you yesterday?" And him saying, "I don't know," and you saying, "Okay, here's more." You are an excellent manager of the fiscal health of this city, and it must irk you beyond words that the superintendent isn't. But it is the students who suffer while you try to teach them a lesson. So I'm asking you to cave in on one thing. Pay for transportation. It shouldn't be a chargeback. Most cities pay for it out of municipal funds. It's a very reasonable sum to cover considering the overall deficit. Please consider removing the chargebacks for transportation. Finally, to the superintendent, your vision for this district is incredibly inspiring. You see a future for Lemonster Public Schools that, if realized, would create one of the best school systems in this state. But visionaries rarely make good managers, and like it or not, that's also part of your job. Visionaries can't afford to stop and worry about the details. Visionaries need to keep their eyes on the big picture. If visionaries get stuck among the trees, they can no longer see the forest. We, as a school system, can no longer afford to be led by a visionary. You have brought this district to the point of financial catastrophe. Your attempts to realize your vision while refusing to wade into the minutia of day-to-day management has created a $5 million deficit, which you then blamed on the increase of fixed costs. You're not allowed to be shocked that expenses like salaries and health insurance have increased. At the very least, you owe the children and parents, and yes, the teachers of this district, an apology. This happened on your watch. The buck stops with you, all five million of them. Some of the cuts in this budget need to come from your visionary programs, and this includes LCE. I have looked at the numbers from every angle, upside-down and sideways. The cost-benefit analysis that you presented to the school committee is flawed. You have a staff of four full-time teachers and one full-time principal that educates at most thirty-nine students. The attendance rates that were self-reported to DESI indicate that for the 2015-2016 school year, 73 percent of LCE students were absent ten or more days compared to 25 percent in the rest of the district. Sixty-nine percent of students had unexcused absences of more than nine days compared to 25 percent in the rest of the district. According to the numbers that you reported to DESI, 71.8 percent of students at LCE are high needs, but not all of those students have IEPs or five-of-all fours. How can the special education administrator claim that all these students would require out-of-district placements to the tune of 70,000 to 100,000 if their needs and accommodations haven't even been identified? You are paying too much for too little benefit. If left to grow, I have no doubt that LCE would become an inspiring model of 21st century learning that draws students from all over central Massachusetts. But a village cannot spend all its money on seeds and then starve while it waits for the crops to grow. In the current financial climate, a product of your own doing, LCE is unsustainable. I would like to end with three recommendations. To the school committee, please pass the superintendent's budget with all funds slated for transportation and LCE reallocated to meet other shortfalls. Mayor Mazzarella, please cover the entire cost of public school transportation in this district, both regular-day buses and special education transportation. Superintendent Jolliker, put on your hip boots and wade into the muck with the rest of us. Show us you can focus on the details. Create an administrative organization that is transparent, accountable, and responsive to the needs of all students, not just the ones who fit your vision. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. But I ask that everyone sort of think about what they're going to say and summarize it in two minutes, just so we can give everybody an equal chance to come up. So the next person that listed themselves as a speaker is Ashley Arpano.
Yeah. She yielded her time to me.
Okay, she did. Okay, thank you. Jennifer Kiefer? Kiefer?
Jen Kiefer, 104 Center Road, Pittsburgh. Good evening. It is my privilege to address you today as the president of the Lemonster Education Association. As you know, it is my responsibility to be sure that the voices of many are heard, especially in times of difficulty. The budget issues we are facing are difficult, but more than that, it's embarrassing. According to the district profiles listed on the DESI website, of the 407 communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, 28 of them provide the same percentage or less in funding for their schools as Lemonster. This is not a new situation. Lemonster has been funding their schools at minimal percentages of both the minimum spending requirements as set by the Commonwealth for a very long time. This is a disgrace, and unfortunately, this lack of funding is being felt by our educators and students daily. The educators in this city go above and beyond every day for the students, and this is within an environment that is anything less than ideal. We can't support our students adequately with our current situation. Complaints have been made to DESI about class sizes for some of our high-need students, and deeper cuts are going to have an even greater negative impact on the quality of education that our students receive. Two percent above the foundation budget does not work. We are now faced with a situation that may require the reduction of teachers across our district. Pause to think about how that impacts every facet of education. This will create greater class sizes, reduction of programs for our students, continued non-compliance issues with our high-need students, and these items, along with others, are going to have a negative effect on our students. They deserve more. They deserve a city that invests in the future through the education of their young. The intricacies of a city or school budget are not my expertise by any means, but I have been involved in many conversations with those around me, have done some research, and have listened to all that is being said. This has led to the same questions over and over. Why isn't the city budget covering transportation costs? Why is the weight of health insurance costs falling solely on our backs? And why does the city reallocate money that is owed to the school department to us and make it appear as if they're doing us a financial favor? Our financial deficit is troublesome, to say the least, but what is most troubling to me as president is that I don't see numbers being proposed for cuts, but names of professionals that represent a group of well-respected, well-educated, and completely dedicated people whose lives may change completely because they will be without a job. This should not be happening. My charge to you is look at the budget being proposed and understand that it isn't going to work to settle for a minimal percentage above net school spending. This trend needs to stop. The far-reaching effects of not investing in our students is detrimental. Everyone involved deserves more. Support us. Take a stand for the students of Lemonster.
Thank you. Again, everyone, if you come up, two minutes. So think about what it is that you want to say, or is there one person that's going to speak for all of you? That's fine. That's all I have for the listed signing group. Would anyone else like to address the committee? If so, just come forward with your name and your address for the record, please.
Just a technical issue.
Sorry. Oh, no, they can hear me?
Oh, they can hear.
I didn't say anything. Okay, would anyone else like to address the committee? If so, please come forward and your name for the record, please, one last time. Oh, sorry. Melissa?
Thought someone else was going to come up.
No?
So I live, my name is Melissa Bible. I live at 178 Fifth Street in Lemonster. I am a taxpayer and I'm a parent of four children in the district. I was at the budgetary meetings last year when net school spending was proposed, and we knew then that there was not going to be enough funding to support this fiscal year. And we're now in a deficit that supports that, and we're again asking, we're apparently going to receive a net school spending budget. Apparently, we haven't learned from the lessons that have been taught in the past. I have a child who's going to the freshman or was hoping to go to the freshman football team. We're hearing that that's potentially being eliminated. Honors classes are being eliminated. As a taxpayer, why do I want to continue to invest in the education in this community when the programs I thought my children were going to receive are being eliminated? Tomorrow, I will be contacting communities around where I work and asking about school choice because if Lemonster isn't going to properly educate my children, I'm going to seek communities that will and have them build Lemonster.
Thank you, Melissa. Would anyone else like to address the committee? Anyone else? One last time. Okay, we'll close the public forum session of the meeting.
Can I say one thing now?
Yes.
So I want the message to be leaving here is, you know, we realized a year ago how bad this was going to be, and here we are now. So Larissa, I take that to heart, what you said. But I'm hoping, you know, as we shake out, this current year's deficit will be reduced, which will reduce next year's deficit, and we are going to do everything we can to come up with as many ways. And I know that a lot of the teachers have added their input to trim every bit that doesn't affect the programming and the class size. It's just such a huge deficit. I mean, it's going to be felt places, there's no doubt. I'm not trying to sugarcoat anything. But I think that this is our worst-case scenario, and working with the mayor and working, you know, with everyone and with ourselves, that hopefully it will get better from here. So I'm not saying don't panic because I think, you know, panic is certainly there, but just know that we are going through this budget, you know, invoice by invoice, line by line, trying to find places that will keep people and programming in place.
Right. And I also have a whole packet here, and it's possible for me to share this with everybody. We'd be killing all kinds of trees if we did. So I'll get it posted up on the city's website, and you could see yourself exactly where the city spends its money, how much it spends, if we're under or over net school spending with the percentages, what we spend on our buildings. You can see the whole breakdown. I don't mind sharing that with you. We'll put that up. If you look in the city's website, you'll be able to find that. And just let me just spend one second explaining the process. I think maybe some confusion is I asked for a net school spending budget just as a baseline. It helps me. I do that with all city departments because there are already automatic costs that we already realize. Those are in the budget, things like automatically, we know, we actually lucked out this year. We had a six percent increase in healthcare, which is actually pretty good. We had estimated between eight and nine percent. So we did very well. On the other hand, so there's some fixed costs available, built into that. So what I asked for is a net school spending with alternatives, sort of alternates on the side, so that if we went over our net school spending, we would know exactly where those funds would go. So if we're at net school spending and we got another $300,000, where would specifically that $300,000 go? Last year, our net school spending went up over $550,000. We extra, we appropriated that, those extra funding that came from the city. We really didn't have any discussion at all from anybody as to where that money went. No, I'm not saying anybody ran off with it. What I'm saying is those dollars got put towards expenses and costs, so there's no question about that. But school committee didn't have any discussion about that. So we, no one said, "We're just funding a net school spending," or that we, what I asked for is a net school spending budget. School committee can pass any budget it wants and submit it on, but that's in terms of a starting point. I asked for a net school spending budget specifically for that reason. So no one has said that's all what the city's going to spend is on net school spending. So the whole packet will talk about where we spend our money on capital improvements, how much of the free cash has gone back to the school department, how much money has been used to pay the debt service on school buildings. All of that is here. School department doesn't pay for transportation. We, the city has to fund the transportation. And here is who's responsible for transportation and transporting students, but either way, I think I want to echo what Kristin is saying, is everyone can sit here and blame anybody they want and how this all happened, but that isn't going to get us out of this. Okay? So what's going to require is everybody working together somehow, some way, and continue to work from this point on to find as many cost savings as we can, in many places we can, so that those cuts aren't realized, either all of them or some of them. But I don't, everybody's going to have their version about how all this happened, but it isn't going to change a thing tonight, or tomorrow, or next week, or next month. But it's an opportunity for everybody to come together, and I'm going to do everything I can to put every single dollar, and that's what I've done every year. I, you know, other departments have sacrificed for the school department, and that's, nobody's complaining. But at the end of the year, we have to have a balanced budget, required to have one, and there's only so much money that comes from it. But everything will be in the packet here. You'll see where all the money comes from. It's all here. If there are additional questions, you can contact me or my office. Everybody knows how to reach me, and we'll go into further depth on that. Okay? Well, I don't want to keep going, and just, and the budget process, just so you understand, is, so the school committee passes a budget, submits it to the mayor, the mayor gets the budget, like I get all the other budgets in the city, and we go through a whole entire process of how much money do we have, what are our fixed costs, and then we go from there, and then I submit a budget to the city council. So there are many steps in place, many more steps in place before a final budget is passed. The state has not even passed a budget yet, so we don't even know what our total aid is going to be until that budget is passed. So this is very sort of fluid, so to speak, in terms of finalizing any kind of budget, but you should stay involved by all means, share your thoughts if there are places you work in the system, if there are places that you think we can save money. Please let me know. I wish I'd give you an incentive for that. Maybe we could, but all for those sorts of things. That's what's going to get us out of this. Go ahead.
So I just want to say, you know, if we do get the millions that we need or some of it for transportation, that doesn't increase our net school spending.
Correct.
So we may very well get more money, but we'll still be, you know, wherever we are with the net school spending budget. So I would appreciate any money that we get for anything, no matter what pot it goes in.
Correct. I agree.
Dean, before we discuss deliberations on the budget, I just got an email alert from MASC. Tomorrow, there's a hearing on the budget with the Senate, and there's a proposed amendment to adopt the provisions of the Foundation Budget Review Commission, which would be really significant, and it's called Amendment 75. They urge everyone to call your state senator tonight, tomorrow morning. Go on the website, MASC. They have a sample letter, but seriously, we're not alone in this situation, but if we can get a hold of our state senator, that would be helpful.
Okay, thank you for your patience. Okay, we will now move on to superintendent's report. Do we have any communications?
There are no communications.
All right, and if we could get on with the item 1D, which is the superintendent's report?
Yep, just a quick overview for the community. Once again, we have five weeks left in the school year, so we want to take full advantage of that. Graduation coming up on June 3rd with the preliminary activities for seniors, graduating seniors prior to that. So please check websites, take advantage of the school activities that are available as we move forward. And I just want to take a moment out of the superintendent's report to thank the many members of the school community and primarily the teachers and employees who have provided us with feedback on the budget process, provided us with ideas for budget reductions. And I think I pretty much summed everything up in the email that I sent district-wide today in regard to, if you have other ideas, other suggestions, get them to us so we can continue to work through this. As the mayor indicated, this is a work in progress. We still have work to do ahead of us in order to get the budgets squared away, and I appreciate the work that you've been able to help us out with. So that ends the superintendent's report.
And I'll move on to presentations, the FY 2018 School Department Budget Presentation and Discussion.
Okay, we have overview presentation. Glenn, if you can come up to the microphone just to work with me through the presentation. All the school committee members have the presentation at their locations, and I believe that there's probably some that are available for the audience. So Gina, we have that opening slide. The, we'll just go quickly to the district-wide goals, which is the next slide. These were goals that were established by the school committee early on in the process when we were in the governance initiative. And ultimately, you know, our overall objective and the first goal is just to make sure that all students have opportunities and the skills necessary for our college career and citizenship, that we'll continue to partner with, partner with the entire community to enrich the education for all students, and then ultimately that will be efficient and effective in our use of resources. The district improvement goals, ultimately rigorous standards-based curriculum, which would make great advancements in that over the last few years. A system of using data to improve instructional practices. We have improved the infrastructure that we have in the district to continue to analyze student data and build the appropriate interventions for students to be successful. And objective three is the system of support for academic and social-emotional growth and development. So overall, these are the initiatives that we undertake on a daily basis. FY 18 budget objectives. Typically, these are the objectives that we set out to accomplish during each budget season, to form a collaborative approach with the community as well as the school committee and administration to review finances in preparation for the development of the budget. And in this case, we have been charged with meeting the goal of establishing the FY 18 budget that required net school spending. These other goals are the ones that I've included in the past, and the school committee have understood this year. I'm not too sure that we're going to be able to meet the ability to sustain the current operations of the Lemonster Public Schools. We will continue to maintain our district focus on instructional practice, but that will be with some changes in classrooms and classroom sizes, and we'll continue to try to meet the needs of all students, including our high school, high-needs population, but we had limited budget resources in FY 17 for that particular population that will continue into 18. This snapshot of the governance budget, for anybody who has gone to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education website, this is a snapshot of the state and local aid for FY 18. Once again, based on the governance budget, as the mayor indicated, we don't have a full budget from the Commonwealth that has been voted. That will be towards the end of June. But you can see required local contribution is at $325,750 for a 1.19 percent increase in Chapter 78, which is aid from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, is at $122,460 at a 0.28 percent level. So overall, the district is receiving about $450,000 at a 0.63 percent increase. And, you know, I think that Mrs. Howard indicated that this is happening, and Mrs. Kohler, that this is happening across the Commonwealth. Most of the urban districts are being hit pretty hard, and I'm sure you've read in the news that many, many districts are facing some pretty significant budget reductions in FY 18. So go to the next slide regarding the budget challenges, and I'll turn this over to you, Glenn, so you can walk through. And, you know, I think that Mrs. Howard indicated that this is happening, and Mrs. Kohler, that this is happening across the Commonwealth. Most of the urban districts are being hit pretty hard, and I'm sure you've read in the news that many, many districts are facing some pretty significant budget reductions in FY 18. So, go to the next slide regarding the budget challenges, and I'll turn this over to you, Glenn, so that you can walk through those budget items.
The two biggest challenges that this budget faces are health insurance and student transportation. Health insurance based on current year expenses, a 6% increase will be $686,340. In essence, our health insurance cost next year will be $11.4 million, which represents 16% of our entire budget, 16% of the net school spending budget. That $686 is more than we're being $448,000 increase that we're allotted by the formula. Student transportation expenses.
Glenn, before you leave that, can you just explain, just, I think this is probably the best example of how outdated the foundation budget is. Just that one, sharing the one fact about how obscure and outdated this is, kind of is the thing that leaves, I think, creates some understanding?
Absolutely. The formula for net school spending was determined in 1993. It was the state's attempt at ensuring that every child in the state of Massachusetts has an opportunity to be given an adequate education. They came up with a formula to determine what in 1993 it would cost to provide an adequate education. That formula has been triggered with very minimally. So, here we are, 20-plus years later, and health insurance under the formula, we should be spending about $6.9 million on health insurance out of our $70 million. In reality, we're spending, we'll be spending $11.4 million on that one item. So, there's a big difference between what we'll actually be spending with the formula that says. And if you're taking four, five, six million dollars extra from one line item, that means you don't have it for other line items like instruction, administration, building maintenance, et cetera. So, that's one of the areas, or two or three there. But that's the major area where in Leamons, you're immediately behind the curve as soon as the formula comes out, we spend more than that formula says we should spend. Next, I have the student transportation expenses. In district transportation, those are the big buses you see traveling around the city. The in-district sped transportation, which are the smaller yellow buses you see in the district. Out-of-district sped transportation, which is primarily the white vans, it's a van pool. And then homeless transportation, which many people forget, we spend about $150,000 a year in transporting homeless students to and from Leamons. Our projected increase next year over the 4.9 we're spending is $195,056. As it currently stands, current routes, current student population, current contracts, we will spend $5,71,470 next year in transportation. As Superintendent Jollier mentioned earlier, we're looking at any opportunity we can to reduce that cost. We have transportation consultants coming in this week, primarily grant-funded, to assist us in trying to reorganize routes, consolidate routes, and hopefully reduce transportation expenses by one or two of the yellow buses, and hopefully consolidating out of district sped transportation.
But, and, last year's budget, school committee asked for $3.2 million in the budget for transportation. The difference between this year, or what was asked for in the budget last year and this year, from what I understand from the superintendent, is what is not $195,000, but 1.8 million.
I wasn't here during the budget process last year.
Right. No, I'm just saying.
I can say what you spent last year was a hang of on more than the $3.2 million that...
So, the $195,000 is what was spent last year, this year.
What we project on spending this year.
But it's 1.8 million more than what was asked for last year.
I'm not sure, yeah, what was asked for...
Well, that's the number you got from the superintendent today.
3.2 million represents what was budgeted, it was a carryover from the prior year's expense. You actually spent 4.4 million or so last year, and the budget says 3.2 million, there's a...
Of 1.8 million.
But bottom line is, if you funded the same amount of money that you funded transportation for this year, which is from the city, not part of net school spending, the difference is 1.9 million. And that difference is one of the issues people are talking about, that if it's going to cost 1.9 million more, and that money is not forthcoming from the city, that has to be taken out of net school spending eligible expenses, which creates issues that people...
But the real amount is 1.9 million. That's all I'm trying to say. Here's another, 1.9 more that we have to, because it wasn't allocated last year, because it wasn't in the budget.
You are correct.
It wasn't, if you look in the column of what the school committee asked for, it was 3.2 million, and that's what, that's what we budgeted for, and it went way over that, that's all I'm trying to say. So, the difference between what was asked for and the next year's budget is 1.8, almost 1.9 million. Yes?
I don't think that's what we asked for. I'm pretty sure we asked for more money than that. That's all the money that we were allowed to spend on it.
No, I didn't cut it, I, what was asked for is what I funded.
Well, just to be clear, we didn't vote on a budget last year because we weren't allowed to.
I got a budget that said 3.2 million, and that's what I budgeted for, 3.2 million, not 4.70. So, we've been trying to make up the 4 point without knowing, it's hard to predict, it's hard to make up for that kind of money when you don't know that's what the actual is going to be. I mean, you have to go by the budget. So, anyway, it's the difference between 3.2 and then the new amount, which is almost 1.8, 1.9 million. That's how much more we're going to have to budget for. That's just, it's not really 193.
A big number.
It's huge. And none of it, and it doesn't count towards net school spend. I think it was said earlier today that the city needs to pick up the cost of the transportation, but I think what they're saying is so that other funds on the schools aren't sort of allocated. Yes?
So, I think what happened last year was because we didn't pass a budget, a lot of the numbers were rolled over from, Dan had, before he left, had rolled a lot of the numbers over from the year before. So, I think, but we didn't present that amount, it was what was rolled over. We didn't vote, and the school committee did not pass the budget last year.
Okay. All I can tell you is, we have to have something to go on. I got 3.2 million. I asked the question, how much do you need for transportation? 3.2 million.
I think that was what was rolled, the numbers that you had rolled over.
That's what I have to work with.
We didn't pass anything.
Okay. If you didn't or you didn't, somebody has to give me a number that says, when the question's asked, how much you need, I have to do a budget for the city, I have to be fiscally responsible.
But I'm not...
The number was 3.2, that's what I allocated and prepared for, 3.2, not four or five million. So, I'm just saying, so, the difference now is not 193. Now, I have to find, I guess, all this responsibility is on me, is not 193, but 1.8 or 1.9 million, which will not count, as Kristen said, towards net school spend. Anyway, let's move on.
I mean, I think the good news is we have a number this year to present, whether we like it or not.
It's $5,71,470 at this point, before we reduce the...
Okay, let's look at special education. FY 18 out-of-district, special education tuition expense will increase by 3.43. This is primarily driven by the operational services division in the Commonwealth. They work through the process of increased tuitions for the individual schools that we send students to, so that percentage is pretty much out of our control. The overall increase is about $190,847. Projected budget for out-of-district tuition expense is $5,749,847. As in FY 17, there are no new positions. We've had meetings with CPAC, number of parents are here this evening, as well as we've had some complaints that we've responded to that have gone to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. But as in FY 17, right now, we don't have any positions in the budget, although that has been recommended for approximately 1.5 million for positions in, for special education compliance. But just to make that point, that there are no positions in this year's budget. And the FY 18 budget breakdown, not to be repetitive, just to give you an idea, increase in Chapter 70 from the Commonwealth is the 122, increase in local contribution is the 325, projected increase in school choice is around 308. That's because we've kind of reversed the trends in school choice, where we have been attracting more students into the district, into Leamons to public schools versus those that are going out. So, we've been able to bring in some additional funding, and the school committee voted to continue school choice at our last meeting. Tuition revenue, this is, looks like a small number, but during the course of the year, we were able to create a partnership with the West Boyleson Public Schools to tuition students into the Center for Technical Education Innovation, as well as set a tuition rate for the Leamons to Center for Excellence. So, as students come in, they will pay a tuition rate as long as they're sending districts approve, and this number could increase as we move on. Total revenue is $803,149. Now, when you look at salaries and wages, which are primarily contractual increases, two mil, a little bit over $2 million, increase in health insurance, which Glenn and the mayor just went through, was the 686. The out-of-district tuitions that I just mentioned was the 190, and then increase in transportation expenses. We're already up to a basic increase in expenses just on these contractual obligations of So, we begin the whole process with a projected deficit of 2.3 million. On this next slide, why don't you actually take these, Glenn, and we can work through these, so?
Yeah, we're looking at the overall picture we face moving into FY 18. The projected deficit of operating expenses for next year is $2.3 million. Realize that health insurance, last year was subsidized by school choice in the amount of $1.3 million. So, just as the mayor pointed out, that even though we spent more in transportation, we didn't necessarily fund it sufficiently, the same can be said for health insurance. The use of school choice was also used this year to cover the difference between the actual amount we'll be spending on out-of-district tuitions and the amount we budgeted, plus the amount of circuit breaker that we received from the state. Most places, the amount that you budget, plus the circuit breaker, will cover your expense, and in most districts, you still have money left over to keep in the special reserve fund. But we not only spend all the money we get in circuit breaker, which is reimbursed by the state for what they consider excessive out-of-district costs, it's not that we're spending more than any other district, in fact, we're spending less this year and next than we were five or six years ago. It's just that the formula says that you should have 1% of your student body in out-of-district placements. But we're 1.3, 1.4%, but that's a big difference when you go from 54 to 70 students. Also, the formula says that the average out-of-district tuition cost should be about $23,000. Well, the students that Leamons sends out of districts are not at that $23,000 level, those students are staying in district. It's the students with high special needs that are sent out of district, and an average tuition between 70 and 75,000. So, we'll budget 5.7, 5.6, 5.7 million for out-of-district tuition next year. The formula says we should be spending about 1.5. So, again, there's a multimillion-dollar difference between reality and what the formula says we should be spending. The state did try to address that issue with the circuit breaker, but it's just not insufficient to actually help us with that deficit. So, you add those to, plus this year's current transportation deficit, it's actually close to 1.6 million, but the city council, at their request, the mayor, provided $860,000 a few weeks ago of their free cash to set that 1.5, 1.6 million deficit. So, currently looking at a deficit of $727,850. Last year, that amount was $245,000, and because we couldn't pay it last year, we ran a deficit that was paid out of this year's school fees. Total projected deficit, you add up the operating budget lines and the three areas that we no longer have funds to cover, we're looking at 4.99, 6.5. That's where we get the $5 million that we need to reduce in expenditures in order to beat the net school spending requirement. Want to go to the next one?
Yeah, so ultimately, the process has been very transparent. Every employee in the district received a copy of the budget reductions, the detail of the budget reductions, so that is not a secret to anyone. This provides us with some of the reductions that were included in there. Ultimately, we reduced a total of $5.8 million out of the budget, and that was essentially staff reductions in athletics and extracurricular offerings, reduction in instructional materials, reduction in substitute teachers, and then the subsequent reduction in health insurance that is directly correlated to the reductions in staff. So, that's the $5,807,132. This next slide just summarizes, the detail is pretty much the same as to what you had received via the district-wide email, and this just goes through central office staff, reorganization, secretarial, reorganization of custodial, reductions in paras and in tutors, slight reduction in the nursing staff, the actual reduction in instructional staff, which is teachers, reduced classroom instructional supplies, agenda books, athletics, extracurriculars. So, that pretty much summarizes the reductions. Now, the $5 million number, the 5807, makes sense because we have a $5 million budget, but along with that, now we have to add some additional expenses back in, and that's primarily unemployment, because as we reduce staff, there's a percentage that we have to factor in for coverage of unemployment expense, so that's a big number of 1.1. Other reorganization expenses with movement of staff around is about 328. We are looking at two outsourcing projects, one for the, we have two groups of custodians, the senior custodians that manage our individual building facilities, and then custodians that work in the buildings during the course of the day and evening. We're looking at outsourcing for those employees, as well as projected outsourcing for the information technology area. So, the additional expenses we need to add back in are about 2.5 million, so the net yield from the reductions are about 3.2 million. Based upon what Glenn has already outlined, we will continue to work with the community to reduce transportation expenses. This is going to range, changes in the in-district regular yellow bus routing, it will include elimination of buses, expansion of the transportation radius that we currently use for students, identifying ways to make routing more efficient. Heather Mazafaro headed up a task force at the beginning of this fiscal year, and they generated some ideas as to how we can continue to make this process happen, and we'll continue to reach out to parents and the community as a whole to try to be more efficient in the routing and reduce the overall transportation costs. Secondly, as Glenn indicated, we do have consultants coming in to review special education in district transportation, as well as those students that we send out of district to hopefully reduce some of the routing expense. So, we're hoping we can aggregate about $275,000 in reductions on transportation, but we'll have to see what comes out of that process. So, I know many of you turned out this evening, and we appreciate your interest in the budget and in the process, but tomorrow night, we do have a full FY 18 budget public hearing in the Leamons to High School auditorium, tomorrow night, 7 o'clock, same time. And then ultimately, school committee will deliberate on the comments that they hear from this evening's meeting, from the discussion, and from the public hearing tomorrow evening, and we'll be meeting again on Tuesday, May 30th, at 7 o'clock here at Apple Seeds. Seeds, to hopefully move forward on voting on a budget so that we can move that budget on to the mayor by June first. So we'll open it up for discussion from the committee, so I'll turn it back over to the chair.
Wendy, who's first?
Yeah, I just had a question for Glenn. Back on that breakdown, you mentioned a couple of weeks ago, the eight hundred and sixty-some odd thousand that was allocated. I just want to be clear, that was the Medicaid reimbursement money, correct? Okay. I just wanted to make, because you said it came from precash, and I understand that it goes into there, but it came first from the Medicaid reimbursement, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Can you just explain that just a little bit, so people know what that is, like the Medicaid money that we receive?
We provide a lot of services to students with special needs. One area that the state assists us on is the circuit breaker reimbursement, which for high-cost out-of-district tuition, they reimburse as a percentage based on a formula. That'll provide, we'll call it one point five million dollars a year, as we're in training. Another area that we get reimbursed from, it's not a state source, it's a federal source. It's Medicaid reimbursement, services provided to students in need, services provided by the district that we get reimbursed for based on a formula. And as of June thirtieth last year, we had billed and received reimbursement for eight hundred and sixty thousand and a hundred and forty-two dollars. We're doing the same thing this year. But because it's a federal fund, that does not land directly in the accounts of the school department, that's provided to the city. And historically, the city has taken that money, and when it reverts to free cash, when they do their, their end-of-year balance, that money, as I understand, has always been allocated back to the school department to cover transportation expenses. This year, it'll cover about half, a little more than half of the current accounts.
Just a question, actually for both of you. In the deficit we have reported, are we including potential Medicaid reimbursement for next year, or does that not include it?
We're not including that as a revenue.
We're not even sure the Medicaid.
Right, I understand that. We've received it every year. Do you know what, is it another eight hundred thousand that we anticipate?
It'll be a little bit more than that.
So if we receive that money, if we get that, we could apply that towards busing and that, just about halves?
Every year, and again, it's not required. A lot of cities don't give it back, or they have an agreement where they give half or a third. Every year, we've transferred it back to the school department, and we'll do the same thing next year.
So if the federal government does give us that, that saves us above our deficit?
They're giving it to us because we've already collected three quarters of that money. We, all the money allocated, money earned or billed as of June thirtieth.
To be the following year.
So, I mean, I think when, as we start to put together the, the actual budget, I think if we can get, you know, your commitment to getting that money and being able to apply it towards busing, that in itself saves us, or doesn't save us, but it offsets the deficit by eight hundred thousand dollars.
But again, I want everybody to make sure, if you look at this line here, which says increase in transportation expenses, a hundred and ninety-five thousand, it's not.
No, I know, it's like two million, it's almost two million dollars. But eight hundred thousand towards two million is a lot.
It's a lot of money. I understand, but I don't want to mislead anybody to think, when they're going through their math, there's a hundred and ninety-five thousand. We first have to make up two million dollars.
Yes, right.
Not one ninety-five. Nona was next.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the public knows that where the federal government's concerned with Medicaid, with the current administration, the likelihood is we're going to not have that Medicaid. They're going to stop that. So I would again urge anyone to contact their congressman and their senators to fight to keep Medicaid reimbursement back to the cities.
Superintendent, when will we, sort of the way that I had asked for the budget, is to have that net school spending as a baseline, but then also have a list of things that we would put back into the budget. I'm not making, I guess I'm making an assumption, based on looking at page four, which was special education. I would assume that that is the top priority?
Well, I think we had this discussion at finance on last Thursday evening, and I think that transportation, of course, is, we've kind of beat that up tonight, but that would be one item that was the top priority, and Kristen, correct me if I'm wrong, but this was what I had wrote down as notes. We had also talked about the special education is, is a priority, but also athletics and then returning teachers that are on the reduction list back to classrooms, so.
Yeah, I don't think we've had a chance to really discuss anything in detail. I think every place we have a cut is important to someone and to.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah. What we will, what, what I think we need to do is get, get you a net school spending budget that will be that worst-case scenario, and then decide how we layer those priorities. And that goes with the administration giving us a line item budget, which we still need to get. So, and that I'm hoping will be changing as we get into July, as we realize maybe some money in some seventeen lines, so.
But it's going to be very, very helpful.
Yeah.
To know what the priorities of the school superintendent and the school committee, specifically in dollar, in dollar language, specifically, two hundred thousand dollars will go towards this.
And we haven't, we haven't had those debates yet, because this is the first time we've had a chance to do this.
I understand, right. I'm just saying, I want to be very clear on how we're going to proceed.
I agree with that.
So that way, if there's, you know, there's going to be money appropriated above and beyond, which I'm sure there will, that we'll, we'll be very clear on that from the get-go.
Jim, Title One?
Yes.
What's the status on Title One? Because we fund a lot of positions.
Yeah, right now, we're anticipating level funding for FY eighteen. For FY nineteen, all bets are off, because based upon the preliminary federal budget for education, there's an awful lot of money that was typically identified in traditional grant sources such as Title One, Title Two-A, that go towards low-income students, and we're not seeing that those budget lines are going to be funded. Title Two, based upon our last review of the federal budget, was totally eliminated, and that goes towards a lot of our mentoring of teachers, professional development of teachers, support of teacher growth and improvement within the district. Title One, a lot of that money is being shifted towards choice and towards private schools, and I don't see any other sources that are actually going to fill in those gaps for public education. So it's too hard, too hard to predict right now as to what those trends are going to be for FY nineteen. But right now, for FY eighteen, I think we'll probably maintain consistent funding, or may drop slightly, but I'm not anticipating anything right now, so.
But it might be a good time to.
Yes.
Itemize the positions that are funded by Title One, so that we know them as well.
Yep.
Because, you know, when grants dry up, it, I mean, obviously, Title One impacts the high-needs population, so I think that would be important. Put that on your list, Kristen, that we should get that for prioritization.
And that's for all, that's for all grants, actually, not just Title One.
Right, but Title One is the.
The big one.
Big one. What about the, the SPECT grant?
Yes, Net Handels all of the grants for special education. One is primarily for PD, which has been reducing gradually over the years. Other one is for support of students, so we'll get that information for you also, which also includes positions, so.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay. So, if there are other questions, you can email us, call us. I know a number of school committee members have put their email addresses out there. They're all listed on the website. Is it, is this on the website?
It will be, it's going up on the Saturday.
I'll get my packet up there, and in the meantime, understand, so we're all on the same page. This is a starting point, not an ending point. It's a starting point, and there are things that everyone that's in this room can do to help to sort of narrow this budget gap. So it's going to take everyone's cooperation, and that's how we'll get there. So.
So then, Jim, when should we have our next meeting, when we'd be ready to, to start going over the lines?
Well, we're finalizing line item this week, so we'll have that for you that we can, well, we'll actually have it for the school committee meeting on Monday, so, but we'll get it to the.
Tuesday, 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 September.
I mean, Tuesday, sorry, because of holiday, but we will, we can get it to you as soon as it's wrapped up, so you can start to review it, so.
Okay, so then, should we be scheduling a finance meeting? I think this is more full committee meeting discussion.
Yeah, I think it's probably full committee meeting discussion. I think it'll be easier that way, so everybody has access to the same information, so.
So did we have anything scheduled tentatively for the Thursday after the holiday?
We got one scheduled for this Thursday.
We have, yeah.
But they're not ready to talk.
Right, no, I know.
Glenn, correct me, you have the timing down, so.
Our consultants, who are our, I can feel that, who's coming in Wednesday, they draw all the salary lines. We've got the expense lines, I already knew as well, the salary lines for Wednesday, we get that up to you Wednesday night, Thursday morning.
But this week or next week, you're talking about? So then, the meeting, we think, I think we can vote on salaries and expenses as a general line.
Yeah.
For Tuesday, but for Thursday, should we have the first?
So we were supposed to present the budget, the full budget, to Dean on the first, which is Thursday.
And we're not going to have these lines done, I mean, there's no way, and.
Well, but then, I guess the mayor needs to know.
But you can, in other words, we want the conversation to go right through the summer, really. I mean, if there are other opportunities to save money in other areas that's going to save a position, we don't want to just end this. So I think what she's leading to is, let's get those numbers in that we know are going to be the net school spending numbers, and then continue to work towards.
Yeah, whatever additional funding.
Whatever additional funding. I won't know that until I get all the department heads. In other words, my process starts June one, where after everybody submits their budget, I won't know all those other numbers until then. So I won't know.
I just want to make sure we are giving you what you need to start with.
I think it needs the big ones.
Yeah.
And that's where we can, as I said.
And we'll have those, we have those essentially now, because it's, that's school spending, it's already been identified based upon the governor's budget, but I think what we're saying is, is that the more involved decision-making on what we can and cannot add back is something that's going to take longer.
Right, and that discussion, because you can transfer it by vote of the school committee. You can transfer it from line item, from expenses to salary and wages.
We do that all the time.
So this is, that's why I said, this is just a starting point, so at least we have numbers. Last year, I think, what he said, the school committee have a voter on the budget, whoever, we can't have that yet. We cannot do that. Again, this is the second year or the third year, we can't do that. It's just not responsible to do that, so.
I think one thing that's really important to show where we are coming up with the savings is, I think that we need to list, you know, even if they're smaller numbers buried within larger lines, you know, K-12 insight is thirty thousand, you know, things like that, can we do a spreadsheet, or can you have a spreadsheet for us to show, you know, what are we eliminating? You know, we have some big lines that show a hundred people. You know, where can we, you know, get the other money out?
Ninety-one thousand, five hundred dollars reduction in classroom instructional expenses. We can break that down.
And is like the K-12 insight in instruction, in the classroom instruction? Is that, where would that fall?
I think it's in my budget.
In your budget? Okay. So if we can just make sure that we have those things highlighted, because we need to show, we've done our good.
As superintendent said earlier, we've had a number of suggestions provided by staff, particularly principal teachers, as to what they can most comfortably reduce. The goal is to make every effort to reduce the impact on the classroom. That's the ultimate goal.
Okay, Dean, I know this is probably not an unpopular, or not a popular statement, but, you know, given the state of cuts, and athletics is cut probably in half, I mean, can we allocate some of the funds for the field, put it on hold, and maybe use some of the funds that the city council's already approved or appropriated?
We haven't spent any, other than engineering. We haven't spent a dime on the field, so just so everybody understands before we get into that, I, we haven't spelt a dime on it. We've got, we have money for engineering, and that's as far as we've gone. We haven't spent a dime there.
But is it the intent to, I thought we're going to get the project done this summer, so we're going to be.
We'll, we'll proceed as, as, as we can. Things change, they change, but what, all we're trying to do is wrap up the engineering part of this. And that's it. It hasn't gone with the bid. We haven't spent any money towards it. Yes, correct?
I think what Sue's asking, is it possible for any of this money to be re-appropriated to assist with the deficit?
I, I can't answer any of that tonight, but you just heard, it's not a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in transportation, it's two million. So before anybody does anything, before we put one person back into the budget, if we're going to, if the school committee says, we want to continue on with the contract, the city has to find two million dollars. A prop two and a half override, or an increase in your tax rate by two and a half percent brings in about one point six, one point eight million dollars, somewhere around there, I'm not sure of the total factor of it, what it would be this year. That will go just to filling that transportation.
No, absolutely, and I don't think anybody's questioning that that's an unbelievably difficult stance for US may.
So I can't tell you anything tonight until I have everybody's budget in, because I don't know what the increases are in other budgets. I haven't seen those yet. Those are all coming in, those are all, will be, those will all be in by June first, so I can't tell you anything until that point. Then I'll know.
And I think just for the community to know that at one point, the state funded and gave us money for transportation. So things, you know, worked a lot more smoother, and we had, you know, more, you know, sort of flexibility in our, you know, what we needed to spend our money on. And then when the state stopped funding that, that fell entirely, you know, on the city, because it's non-net school spending, so we can't use the money that we get from the state and from the city for the, our budget. And then the increases in the cost of transportation skyrocketed, you know, a few years after the state did that. So then the gap just kept getting larger and larger and larger. So that's where a lot of that difficulty has stemmed from. And, you know, we have utilized some school choice money in the past to make up some of the deficit in school transportation, and obviously, if we don't have to do that, then that school choice money can be used, you know, to reinstate, you know, teaching, to make sure that we have adequate staffing for the special ed population, so we're in compliance by our state guidelines, as well as, you know, whether some of it goes back to athletics or whatever. I think all of us here wish that we do not have to cut anything, and I think all of us believe we sorely need more money in our budget to continue the great things that are happening. I think for a segment of the population, sports is what gets them to go to school every day, gets them, you know, to graduate and stay, you know, focused on their academics, because they have that carrot of something that they're really good at, and whether it's band, or whether it's the play, or whatever it is, there's lots of things that augment a student's academic performance and keep them engaged. So we want to be able to save as much as possible. However, we're faced with the difficult decision of making some pretty major cuts just to stay afloat with the money we have. So it's, it's going to be a very difficult process, and we're hoping that we'll be able to add stuff back, but we need to be prepared for the worst case scenario. And the finance committee has worked extremely hard, as well as the administration, and, you know, certainly Glenn has been probably, all the gray hair, he came with a full dark head hair, I think, when he came to our district just a few months ago. You know, people are not taking this responsibility lightly.
And so, right now, we pay about one point six five in debt service for our new schools that we're still carrying. It does not count towards net school spending. Not built into that, is not where school, the improvements that we made there in Johnny Appleseed School, we'll have to add that this year. So that's another cost that does not count towards net school spending on these improvements. So those are all the things that are sort of happening and circulating around. X amount of dollars in, we know we have to pay these costs, and that's why, we won't know exactly what the total budget's going to be until all of these factors are in, there's still some unknown. This we know, we have to pay on these improvements to the roofs and the heating systems in the, in the windows. So those aren't built into the budget, and it's not the school department budget that pays for it.
And we have a list of capital improvements, and there's some things there that certainly can wait, but there's other things that if we don't pay attention to.
No, no.
We're going to have major problems.
Good rooms, get those things done. We've been through the crisis in the city where, you know, rain and, you know, we're selling, we buy more buckets than books, and that ended by, you know, doing this work is, is what. I'm just saying, these are all the things that have to be put into the budget that aren't in the budget yet. So it's much more than what you see here tonight. There are other things that are in there that related to schools that aren't in the there that are related to schools that aren't in the budget yet, that have to be, and that'll, that'll evolve as time goes on, so we'll know what the actual numbers are. For this point, for this stage of the game, it's getting a budget submitted, so we know what those numbers will be as a starting point, and from there, we can add in those specific areas, once we fund these other things. But either way, what's not going to go away is, is things like, I mean, you can already look towards next year to see what the numbers are going to be for, figure eight percent increase in healthcare for next year, if it's six this year, hopefully you're going to get that lucky next year with a six percent increase, it's probably going to be eight, and you can figure out what that's going to be already, before we even did do next year's.
Not nearly ten thousand.
What's that?
Not nearly ten thousand.
Exactly, you already know what that's going to be, before we even start, not this coming year, the following year's budget, so. Okay, so tomorrow night, yes?
So Jim, can you just explain, so you gave us, you know, the, the potential budget reductions?
Yeah.
Can you tell us what's going on with staff, and, I mean, have people been notified, or what?
Okay, yeah, the communication process has been, we met with the teaching staff, the first faculty meeting in Wednesday, in the month of May, on Wednesday, and pretty much alerted them to the budget situation that we had. Second faculty meeting with the teachers in May, we went over the strategic process that we had laid out for the school committee, ultimately moving forward to continue to find ways to reduce expense in the future. The, all of the union presidents have been involved in the process from the beginning, when we originally spoke with the teachers, so they have in turn continued to communicate with their employees within their particular associations, and today, ultimately, I met with the mayor first thing, eight o'clock this morning, we went over the reductions so that, he was aware of it, I made sure that he understood that we had to have conversations with employees during the course of the day, because we didn't want to reveal the detail of the reductions until employees had knowledge that their position may or may not be on the list. And then ultimately, we met with people during the course of the day, we released a email, district-wide email, to all employees with the same list of reductions at about one o'clock today, and so the entire district has that list of reductions and have knowledge of it, and that's the same list that I had met with individual school committee members on, as many as I could last week, we talked about it at finance, and you have the final list that we finalized over the weekend in front of you this evening. So, it's been a very transparent process, people understand what the details are, and we'll continue following the district-wide email, I sent emails to each of the union presidents, and urged them to set up an appointment with us to go over, some of the plans for reorganization are a little bit complicated, so we want to go over those with each of the association presidents, so they in turn can continue to communicate to their members as well as ask, answer any questions that they might have, so. So it's been a pretty thorough communication process.
So employees that are impacted directly have been notified?
Yes, they have, yeah, we've sat down with them during the course of the morning this morning.
Okay.
So the next step is a meeting tomorrow night in the Lemister High School auditorium, the Cousins Auditorium, at seven PM, and then the school committee meeting is supposed to be here on Tuesday, but I think we should find another location to have that, maybe at the auditorium.
So we can do that, yeah.
Any other questions? Yes, Heather?
So, excuse me, I know that on finance, we put together, and you may have sent it to you, asking you about ways that the city could also work with us, some shared services where we might be able to save some money, like in payroll, or health insurance, things like that, so I'm wondering IT technology, I'm wondering what on your end, that, after reading that, that you think you might be able to do to help us?
We, we don't have an IT department, I don't know how we're going to help you.
Well, I know that.
Right, we don't have an IT department, I don't know how we can help you with that. I, I, everything's under consideration for right now, you just sent me the letter, I think that we had that conversation. Anybody that has ideas, please submit it to myself, to superintendent. At the end of the day, there's X amount of dollars total, from wherever those pots of money come in, from revenues in, and then we're going to have to allocate those dollars. That's a really simple, or simpler process than most think, it's kind of how you run your house, there are X amount of dollars, and then they have to be allocated to various areas of the budget, that's what we're doing. So if there are areas that we can save money with, we're all for it, anyway that we can save money, that's what we do every day, is try to find areas of money. We haven't hired, we have a halftime person, two halftime people that we've hired since twenty-seven. We haven't hired anybody, so every day we're looking...
We're replacing positions.
We replace people, but we haven't had it. What I'm saying is, every day, this is what we do, we're trying to find another way to save, so if there's any way to help out the school department, absolutely.
So maybe can we... Are we able to talk, are we able to talk communists to communists yet? I know that you had consulting.
Close, getting close, huge, huge project to do that, but they're getting closer. They have some maternity leave issues, and people are working on the project, maternity leave, but getting closer.
So that, whether it's, I guess this year or next year, that could be someplace that we could merge, function, whether, you know, I don't, I don't really care who owns it, but we could at least save that way.
Those are positions on the school side.
I think we pay back the city for
Some of it.
Yeah.
Right, right, so those areas that you can save once that goes online, so.
So is there some sort of, like, commission, or group, or something that we can get together on the city side and the school side, to kind of start working on that, because it's just as easy to say, yeah, we do this every day, but...
If you tell us specifically what areas, then those departments will look at those and, and see whether there are areas that we can improve on and help you out with, and that, but that's something we do every day, I mean, all of our departments work with the school department all of the time, all the time, if there's an ability to save money, or do something to save the cost by offering a service, that's done every day. So, but if there's specific areas that you want looked at, department head is the person there, just like the principals, they're the best people to tell you what goes on in this school every day, and we're glad to answer those questions.
I think that the next finance meeting, we'll come up with a more detailed list, because if we know finance isn't ready yet, that leaves HR, no IT, so our payroll, right, well, that's part of the finance.
We have one person in the HR, there are no secretaries, anybody, she's, I barely talked to her, trust me.
But we're not, I, I don't mean that we're going to overburden your office, I mean, come up with, we were talking about shared service in the sense that, you know, it's, it's a collaborative effort between both groups.
So maybe instead of us needing one pool, and you need one pool, maybe we need one and a half, or something.
Yeah.
Or redundant services, like the payroll, so it's an issue.
Yeah, no, that, that we can, that's ongoing, that's going to fix itself. The HR stuff, believe me, is, you know, she's got her hands full, trust me.
Okay, so we'll strategize.
Okay?
I was just going to say that I encourage the public to show up tomorrow at the budget hearing, we've had numerous years where we've been lucky to have three people show up and say anything at a budget hearing, so we, you know, want to encourage the public to hear for themselves what's going on, hear why, and this is your opportunity to give us your feedback.
Thank you for taking the time to come today.
Encourage you.
To the chair.
Yes.
I just want to kind of echo Eileen said for a moment, our district is bleeding, and I don't think there's a single person at this table who isn't heartbroken by the numbers that we're looking at in this budget. And as I bring up numbers, we talk a lot about numbers, but please understand that we see the faces behind these numbers as well, you know, we do not make these decision like, these decisions lightly. Every cut that we make, we run the risk of impacting our student population and doing serious damage to the people that we have to lay off. There's a lot of blame that can be go, that can go around for, you know, who's at fault for this situation, but ultimately, I think the mayor's right, we need to try and find a solution at this point, and the turnout here tonight is genuinely just amazing to see. And ultimately, what it comes down to is, as citizens of Lemister, as people who work in Lemister, you are our bosses. Come to the public hearing tomorrow, come to our vote on the thirtieth, let us know how you feel, email us, please take any measure you can, reach out to us and let us know how you feel, because ultimately, what you want is what we should be voting on as our priorities for this budget.
Well said. We have to hear what those priorities are, the principals, from people who use the system. Well said. Okay, so, is there a motion to adjourn, or anything on the newer or old business?
Before we adjourn?
Yes.
Can everybody go home and call Jen Flanagan? Amendment seventy-five, amendment seventy-five, tomorrow morning.
This is paramount to the discussion, this foundation budget is nineteen ninety-three is where they came up with this formula. Imagine if you change your oil in your car, since nineteen ninety-three, I mean, it's just, just silly, and a hundred and something thousand dollars more coming from the state as part of the foundation budget to try to balance this.
Yeah, it's nothing.
It's just silly, and it's the, and, and do you Google search when you get home, you find out Brockton, even Newton, the list goes on and on and on, it's all gateway cities pretty much that are suffering the effects of a bad formula, and they've got to tackle the issue to fix this, because, you know, given this community, our size, with the diversity that we have, and diversity, I mean, in needs, not alone, is just not right, but we can't fix that, it can only be fixed at another level, so we've got to do our part and let them know, if the phone doesn't ring, they just assume everything's okay?
I will, I will echo that
Yeah.
to, to call, let them know, Brockton has sixteen million dollars in deficit, two hundred teachers.
And we don't want to go based on the fact that the worse they look, the better we look, we want to be as good as, we want to be as good as we can, we don't want to, but it's the formula.
Everybody's hurting, but everybody's facing that.
I, I just want to add that I have visited a bunch of the buildings and talked to PTOs and parent advisory councils, with real numbers, dollars, not just estimates, on how this nineteen ninety-three, nothing costs today what it did in nineteen ninety-three, with real numbers and trying to get that word out into the community of, that there are two pieces, and in here we debate the city piece, but out there, there's also the state piece, and so some of the principals who have been inviting me to your buildings are here, and we've talked about that, try to get parents and community members to understand these numbers and how detrimental they are, and we've been trying to get that effort going as well, because it is a huge piece.
Okay, motion adjourned?
So made.
All in favor? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Those opposed? Okay, thank you all for coming, Senator.